Being seven o'clock, we'll call the Marathon County Board of Supervisors to order, please. We will start with a pledge of allegiance. Please remain standing because following the pledge of allegiance will be a moment of reflection.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We will have the reading of the notice, please.
The organizational meeting of the Marathon County Board of Supervisors, composed of 38 members, will convene at the Marathon County Courthouse, Assembly Room 504 St., Wausau, on Tuesday, April 23, 2019, at 7:30 to consider the items as were listed on the agenda, and the agenda was duly signed and posted.
Thank you. We will have, I would like to request everyone, please silence their cellphones and any other electronic devices, or put them on vibrate, please, not to interrupt the meeting. And we will then proceed to roll call. And thank you. We'll proceed. And I'd like to welcome all the visitors we have here with us this evening, and also extend that welcome to the viewing audience. And we will proceed on to Item B, Consent Agenda, Items 7 through 11AA. Motion by Supervisor Zerney, and second by Supervisor Langenhahn. Any discussion? Any discussion on those agenda items? Any discussion? Seeing none, we will proceed to vote. Thank you. And we'll proceed. And a motion is carried unanimously. Item BB, Appointment, Under 11A, Public Safety Committee. And I have the clerk read the appointment, please.
I, Kurt Gibbs, Chairperson of the Marathon County Board of Supervisors, do hereby, upon approval of the Board, appoint Supervisor Gene Mas to the Marathon County Public Safety Committee to complete the term of Supervisor Sean Black.
Motion by Supervisor Schaefer, and second by Supervisor Schley. Any, Supervisor Schaefer.
Can you tell us a little bit who that person is? No, no, that's, that's fine. She was on it before.
Any further discussion? Any further discussion? We are coming with some new batteries.
Oh, surprise her, Seiler. She's still having.
Yeah, she's still having issues with her.
We checked the batteries. Mm-hmm. Okay, all the batteries. She voted.
There we go, and we'll proceed. And the motion is carried unanimously. Moving on to ordinances under C1. That ordinance has been pulled, that amending Section 16.06. I will have the corp counsel give a brief explanation.
On the agenda, it doesn't indicate all the ordinance numbers that are going to be reviewed and amended in this case. So we thought that the public deserves to have reasonable notice of the issues that are going to be taken up by the Board, and since they did not appear on the agenda, we asked that, that this be pulled. We did talk to Jamie Polly, the Director of Parks Recreation, and she indicated that we could bring it back next month and have it voted on, so.
Okay, any questions? All right, seeing none, we will move on to Item C, number 13, Repealing and Recreating Section 7.125, Pren 9, General Code of Ordinances, to authorize the Marathon County Highway Commissioner to establish all-terrain vehicle and utility-terrain vehicle routes, Ordinance 5-19. Motion by Supervisor Boots, and second by Supervisor Johnson. Any Supervisor Robinson?
Thank you. In one, in a rare moment of brilliance, Supervisor Schaefer pointed out that there were some inconsistencies in the, in the ordinance, and they deal with number three and number six, and in the three, he says that you have to operate on the right side of the paved surface, and in seven, makes reference to the operating on the paved surface or gravel, and then it goes on to say that they can't operate on the side slopes and within the right-of-way. And obviously, the paved portion of the road is part of the right-of-way, so we're proposing to delete that paragraph, I'm sorry, paragraph six from the ordinance, and I've talked to Jim Grechbach and Scott Corbett, and we're in agreement that it would reduce conflicts and confusion. So I would move to delete paragraph six, dealing with all ATVs, UTVs shall operate only on the paved portions of the roadway and gravel shoulder. Operation of the grassy in slope, ditches, and other highway right-of-ways prohibited and illegal.
Okay, Supervisor Zerney with the second. Any discussion on the motion to amend? Any more, any discussion? So the motion is to remove Section 6 of that ordinance. Let's proceed to vote. Just a second, the clerk, clerk is, needs to properly identify the amendment. Supervisor Durham, could you confirm, please? Thank you, and we'll proceed. And the motion is carried, however, it is not unanimous. And we will move on to, excuse me, Resolutions from Infrastructure Committee, 14, Imploring the Wisconsin Department of Transportation. Oops, excuse me, excuse me. We're back to the, to the ordinance as amended. Any discussion on the ordinance as amended? Any discussion on the ordinance 05-19 as amended with line item six removed? Supervisor Gums.
Is this still going to include, then, John, could you know, that there'll have to be a snow, ATV club in order for, even to request for the township? Is that still in this, then? I think it is, right?
There is the ordinance, and then there are the criteria, which are part of the Marathon County Highway Department's Policies and Procedure Manual. It is, a local municipality and/or, you know, an individual or club could make the request for that, but there are criteria. They would have to have a match, map of the attached route, so they're listing all the property owners and notify them, a map of alternative routes that were pursued. It will require the local municipalities' approved ordinance and resolution authorizing the proposed route through that local town, so we would want some local government buy-in, payment of a $100 check, and then proof of insurance for minimal coverage as comprehensive general liability, insurance, and excess liability of $1 million. So those, if you meet those criteria, we don't differentiate between who can and who can't, but realistically, with those requirements, it's going to be either a local governmental unit or an organization.
Okay, any, any other further discussion on Ordinance 5-19 as amended? Any further discussion? Seeing none, we will proceed to vote. And we will proceed. And the motion is carried, however, it is not unanimous. Now we will move on to Resolutions. Item D, Infrastructure Committee, Item Number 14, Imploring the Wisconsin Department of Transportation to Reconstruct Business Highway 51 Due to the Hazardous, Horrendous, excuse me, horrendous conditions between State Trunk Highway 29 in the Village of Rothschild and the Eau Claire River in the City of Schofield. Resolution 19-19. We have Supervisor Jeong with the motion, and we have Supervisor Christensen, or, excuse me, Christensen, yes, with the second. Any discussion? Any discussion? Supervisor Rosenberg.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I have no poetry for you tonight, but I did want to share that when I shared this specific agenda item on Facebook, someone said, commented, and said that his wife actually was driving down this road and lost a tire because of the way it was, so just wanted to throw that out there for you to think about.
Any further discussion? Any further discussion? And we did appreciate your poetry. And we will proceed. And the motion is carried unanimously. Item 15, Continuation of Access Control, County Trunk Highway K, Marathon County, Resolution Supervisor Gums with the motion, and Supervisor Robinson with the second. Any discussion? Any discussion? Supervisor Schaefer.
Is that still scheduled for, like, 2020? Highway K? Okay, thank you.
Okay, the answer to the question is, is that still scheduled for 2020? And the answer is yes. Any further discussion? Seeing none, we will proceed to vote. And we will proceed. And the motion is carried unanimously. Item E, Human Resources, Finance, and Property Committee, Item 16, Approving 2019 Interdepartmental Budget Transfers from Marathon County Department of Appropriations, Resolution 21-19. This does require two-thirds majority vote of the Board. Supervisor Durham with the motion, and Supervisor Stark with the second. Supervisor Schaefer.
Thank you. Maybe Krista can answer. And halfway through that page, there's a $50,000 transfer from, the number, it says, funding for the Wisconsin River Valley Regional Lab. Is that the crime lab out on 72nd? What, what is the Wisconsin Valley Regional Lab, forensic, forensic lab?
It is the forensic computer examination lab that we have within the Sheriff's Office. The $50,000 is revenue that is coming in from multiple agencies that want to use that service.
Okay, but it's not the crime lab?
No.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any, any further discussion? Any further discussion? Again, this does require two-thirds majority vote. We will proceed to vote on Resolution 21-19, Approving the 2019 Interdepartmental Budget And we will proceed. And the motion is carried unanimously. And we'll move on to Item F, Public Safety Committee and Human Resources, Finance, and Property Committee, Item Number F17, Create two full-time deputy sheriffs positions for courthouse security and abolish eight, reduce positions from 13 to five part-time county courthouse security deputies. Resolution 22-19. Motion by Supervisor Schley, and second by Supervisor Stark. Any discussion on the agenda item? Any discussion? Okay, seeing none, we will proceed to vote. And we will proceed. And the motion is carried unanimously. Moving on to G, Environmental Resources Committee, Possible Reconsideration for the Purpose of Amending Governmental Responsibility Resolution for Urban Nonpoint Source and Storm Water Grants. Resolution 14-19, I would need a motion to reconsider. I would need a motion by Supervisor Fifryk to reconsider, and a motion by, and seconded by Supervisor Schaefer. The motion to reconsider puts this, this agenda item back on the Board floor, just as though it hadn't been voted on.
Fifryk was not here. We gotta have somebody, sorry.
Excuse me, I apologize. Supervisor Fifryk was not here at the last meeting. He was excused on the March 21st, excuse me, 26th meeting, and so I need somebody to make the motion to reconsider who was at that meeting. And Supervisor Gums has made the motion, is the second, good with Supervisor Schaefer with the second. So the motion to reconsider has put this agenda item back on the Board floor, just as it was prior to the vote, and I will have corp counsel give a brief explanation.
Sure. So the motion that's before you right now is to, is to reopen it, so that it can be amended, so that's the first step. It's a majority vote to reopen the matter.
So the motion is now to reconsider, so I will, any discussion on the motion to reconsider? An "I" vote will put it back on the Board floor. And we will proceed. And the motion to reconsider is approved. Now the agenda item is on the Board floor, just as though it had not been voted on as it was motioned and seconded. Any discussion? And now I would entertain a motion to amend. Supervisor Fifryk, to amend and remove?
The words "or designate." This is on page 63. It should be the last item in the packet, in the "now therefore be it resolved" paragraph. It says that. The County Board of Supervisors hereby authorizes the county administrator or designate to act on behalf of Marathon County, and so we're asking for the amend, the motion to amend to remove the two words "or designate." Is that your motion, Mr. Fifryk?
Yes, sir.
Okay, is there a second? Supervisor Johnson with the second. Any discussion on the amendment? The amendment takes out the words "or designate," and that really designates the administrator as the only individual able to sign on behalf of the county. Any discussion on the amendment? Seeing none, we will proceed to vote on the amendment. And we will proceed. And the motion is approved unanimously. Now, any discussion on the resolution as amended? Any discussion on the resolution as amended? All right. And seeing none, we will proceed to vote. And we will proceed. And the motion is carried unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
And we will proceed to Item Number H, Announcements and/or Requests. Any announcements and/or requests? This Thursday, okay. Supervisor Lang.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Marathon County was in the news yesterday, and it was actually for a positive thing, which is always nice. So anyone that's familiar with Miltrum Farms in Athens, my hometown, they were invited to attend and be honored at an Earth Day celebration by the governor and the lieutenant governor. For those who don't know, Miltrum Farms is actually in the process of becoming one of the two first farms in the entire nation to achieve the Alliance for Water Stewardship certification. So it's a pretty big deal. A pal of mine, Dan Punky, was there and talked about how, what farms need at the state level is easy access for farmers to have more funding for county conservation staffing, which is something that we already have talked about on the Environmental Resources Committee, and also funding for manure storage, because we must eliminate winter spreading. And I think this is really important and timely, and I just want to congratulate Mr. Punky and also everyone at Miltrum Farms for their stewardship, setting an example of how it could and should be done, especially now as we see challenges from people who maybe aren't willing to look at science or take part in developing evidence-based policy on this issue. It's important that farms lead the way and support each other, so congratulations to Miltrum Farms.
Supervisor Jeong.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. On April 9th in 1976, that was the year, that was the day and year that the first Hmong family arrived in Wausau, Wisconsin. This Board several years ago recognized April as Hmong Heritage Month, and the Hmong Heritage Month Committee usually, hosts a wide variety of events throughout the community here, educating the community about the Hmong community, who they are, where they came from, and why they're here. To conclude the end of Hmong Heritage Month, the Hmong Heritage Month Planning Committee is hosting a Hmong Heritage Month conference that will be occurring this Saturday at the Rothschild Holiday Inn right by the Cedar Creek Mall over there to conclude the celebration of the Hmong Heritage Month. So it will begin at 10:00 and will end around two, and round three, and there'll be lunch provided as well, so if anybody's interested, please do show up then and also help us conclude the celebration of Hmong Heritage Month. Thank you.
Supervisor Rosenberg.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to give a shout-out to all of the Small Business of the Year Award winners, but especially to the nonprofit winner, the Wausau River District. They want, they took home this award in addition to the Great American Main Street Award a few weeks ago, so they're really killing it. So I hope you come down to Wausau and enjoy the Main Street. We would love you to spend your money there.
Supervisor Seiler.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Back in January, a number of the Infrastructure Committee members attended the Wisconsin County Highways Association Winter Conference in the Dells, and you'll find at each of your places this fact sheet from UW Extension. I wanted to bring this to your attention, because this is one of the topics that was on one of the sessions that was aimed at particularly county highway crews. The wild parsnip is a plant, not only is it very invasive, but it has a lot of very toxic qualities, and so I bring this to your attention as, you know, a public safety issue. If the sap of this plant, if it's, gets on your skin, then you're going to, there'll be severe burns and possible scarring. So when I came back, I did check with our Horticulture educator, Brianna Wright at UW Extension, and she's working with the State Extension Office. They're hoping to do a workshop targeting municipality and town workers, and of course, the county workers also, to make them aware of what this plant looks like and the best way to control it. They're hoping to do these workshops at Portage and Marathon County, we combined, probably in July or August. But in the meantime, please take a look at this and be sure you know what it looks like, because it, there are, it mimics several other plants, and if your child or pet runs through this and brings it into the house, it's not a good thing either. It spreads like crazy, so that's why the sheet's at your place. I also received a really nice email from, from Brianna, from some of her state specialists, with more information, and I would like to send that all out to you, probably work with the clerk's office, to be sure you're emailed all of that link and information. And again, this is just to make sure that everybody, that you, keep yourself and your family safe, so be vigilant. There's several pockets of this already in Marathon County. Thank you.
Supervisor Gums.
Mr. Chairman, I was talking to a construction gentleman this afternoon. We're having trouble with our town hall with mold and such, and he was giving some advice, and at the end of the conversation, he says, you know, he said, "I filled this manure pit in, and locally, and as the county is trying to cover manure pits and fill them back in that are not being used." He finished a job in September, and at this point, Marathon County owes him $35,000 yet on the bill. He's requesting a payment. Do you know anything about that?
It's not an agenda item, but I will look into it. Supervisor Geld.
I just wanted to let my fellow supervisors know that on Sunday, the Marathon County Chapter of the Wisconsin Farmers Union is going to be hosting a meeting on the topic of rural internet access. That is going to take place at 1:00 at Skony's Restaurant in Schofield, and I will be part of the panel that they're going to be having, giving an update on what the county is in the process of doing. If any other county supervisors are interested in attending, to listen, to observe, to add your two cents, you're welcome to do so. I was asked to pass that on, and for those of you that can't make it, I wanted to let you know, if you haven't already seen the information, that there is an RFP out right now, seeking feedback from potential consultants, who can help us to evaluate and develop a potential plan for establishing countywide broadband service. And so in the upcoming months, you will start to hear more about this particular project. If you have any questions, please let our committee members know, and we'd be happy to fill you in, but right now, it's a little bit of, stay tuned, we're working on it.
Supervisor Stark.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to remind Finance and Property, HR Finance and Property Committee, that we have a meeting next Monday at 3:00 here in this room.
Supervisor Mas.
Thank you. At your place is also, there's a flyer from UW Extension. They are going to have an open house on May 23rd from 4:00 to 6:00 at their extension office. Hopefully, the construction is done, because right now, you can't walk through the halls down there. And get down there and see what they're doing, and meet some of our new educators, and our new broadband part-time person that we're sharing with Lincoln County. new broadband part-time person that we're sharing with Lincoln County. And they're going to also be coming up here for a half an hour before our county board meeting. And there will be refreshments to give you a little encouragement to come down to their office. Thank you.
Okay, any other announcements? Clerk needs signatures from Environmental Resources, Infrastructure, HR, Finance and Property, and Public Safety. I would also make note that on this coming Thursday, Eastern Towns Association meeting is in the Town of Mozenee and, excuse me, Western, Western Towns Association meeting. Eastern was last week, it'd be a little late. But Western Towns Association at Town of Mozenee, starting at 6:45, and that is when the meal will be served. Any other announcements? I will take the infamous motion to, and Supervisor Volle made the motion, and Supervisor Seifelt made the second to adjourn. Any further discussion? All those in favor of adjournment signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We stand adjourned. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.